All right. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Crestwood Board of Education meeting, September 12, 2022. Calling the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Presiding Secretary today will be Sue Kaminsky, Trustee Kaminsky. Can we get a roll call, please?
Absolutely. Mrs. Berry's not here. She's recovering. Mr. Baydun.
Here.
Mrs. Elziah.
Here.
Mrs. Falaz.
Here.
Mrs. Janum is at a soccer game. Me, I'm here. Mr. Sabah.
Here.
Me and I'm chair, you have a call.
Okay. We start the meeting with the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you. Can we start with the consent agenda item?
Absolutely. Board of Education approval is recommended for the items listed on the consent agenda, which include the September 12, 2022 board agenda, the minutes from the study session on Monday, August 22, 2022, the minutes from the regular meeting on Monday, August 22, 2022, and the check registry dated August 1 through August 31, 2022.
Support.
Thank you.
We have a motion by Trustee Kaminsky, supported by Trustee Sabah, that the recommended action is the Board of Education approval is recommended for the items listed on the consent agenda, which include the September 12, 2022 board agenda, the minutes from the study session on Monday, August 22, 2022, the minutes from the regular meeting on Monday, August 22, 2022, and the check registry dated August 1 through August 31, 2022. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the business report. Ms. Morgan?
Madam President, you had the board on the amended agenda?
Did we?
You had the amended personnel report.
Okay.
You just need to have a vote on the amended personnel report because that was amended.
It's not here in my.
Yeah, no, my apologies.
Okay, so can I get a motion to approve the amended agenda item?
So moved.
Support.
Okay. Mr. Sabah supported, moved, and Mr. Baydun supported. Any, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. So we will move to the business report by Ms. Morgan.
Thank you. Number one, the approval requisitions. The attached list of requisitions are items that buildings or departments would like to purchase for the upcoming needs. The requisitions have gone through all the appropriate approval processes and have been approved by administration for purchase. In addition, there are funds available to make the purchases. Once the requisitions are approved, they will be processed and purchase orders will be sent out.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Kaminsky.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the requisitions per attachment for A1.
Support.
Okay. We have a recommended action by Ms. Kaminsky, supported by Mr. Sabah, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the requisitions per attachment for A1. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Number two, approval of contract for Williams Education Consultant. As part of our GSRP contract, the district is required to have an early childhood specialist as part of the team. The purpose of the ECS is to be a catalyst for continuous qualify, quality improvement for the GSRP program. The contract will run September 2022 through June 2023 in the amount of $31,200. The district has contracted with Williams Early Childhood Consulting since the position was mandated by the state of Michigan in 2017. The contents of the attached contract meet the needs of the district and are comparable to previous years.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Baydun.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the contract with Williams Early Childhood Consulting for 2223 school year in the amount of $31,200. See attachment for A2.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Kaminsky. We have a recommended action by Mr. Baydun, supported by Ms. Kaminsky, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve contract with Williams Early Childhood Consulting for the 2022-2023 school year in the amount of $31,200 per attachment for A2. Any discussion? Hearing none. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
To approve. Sorry. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Number three, approval of contract with Wayne Risa GSRP. The Great Start Readiness Program contract is up for renewal. This is an annual contract with Wayne Risa. This program services preschool-aged children, providing them with the opportunity to get an early start on education. The program is designed to prepare students for kindergarten, providing structured, social, and emotional support, as well as new opportunities. The Crestwood School District has been allocated 128 half-day slots or 64 full-day slots. This program includes four classrooms with morning and afternoon sessions. I'm attaching the contract for your review.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Sabah.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the attached GSRP contract with Wayne Risa for the 2022-2023 school year. See attachment for A3.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Falaz. We have a motion, recommended action, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the attached GSRP contract with Wayne Risa for the 2022-2023 school year. See attachment for A3 by Mr. Sabah, supported by Ms. Falaz. Any discussion? I actually have a question. Do we know how they determine this allotment? No?
No.
Okay. Do you think you could get us something on that? I would, I'm just interested to see how they come up with the days and the slots that were allotted in our district.
Of course.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. If you approve, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Number four, approval of contract with PlayOn. Crestwood Athletics would like to continue to livestream the sporting events as was started during the 2020-2021 school year. This will allow our community to watch games when they are unable to attend our events in person. The contract is for the 2223 school year and be reevaluated at that time.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Sabah.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the attached contract with PlayOn for the 2022-2023 school year. See attachment for A4.
Okay. Recommended action by Mr. Sabah, supported by Mr. Baydun, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the attached contract with PlayOn for the 2022-2023 school year. See attachment for A4. Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just out of curiosity, is there any way to know how many people actually watch the games?
I was actually gonna ask.
Were ya?
Yeah.
I can double-check with PlayOn. I'm not sure that that's possible, but I will double-check.
Yeah, I was wondering the same thing. Is there some type of report that they generate where it'll show us how many hits we get?
I'll double-check.
Okay.
It has to be. It's a streaming service. It has to.
I think, I think also we need to do a little bit of a better job actually putting it out there as a district, maybe on our website, upcoming calendar, any live sports, because sometimes there's multiple sports at one time. I think that'll be a good thing as well.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Number five, approval of overnight field trip for the band. Crestwood High School Band would like to go to Central Michigan University to take part in the annual band day for the marching band. The opportunity will allow our marching band students to participate in an on-field performance. The performance will take place at Kelly Short Stadium.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Sabah.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve attached overnight field trip for Crestwood High School Band. See attachment for A5.
Support.
Okay. Recommended action by Mr. Sabah, supported by Mr. Baydun, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the attached overnight field trip for Crestwood High School Band. See attachment for A5. Any discussion? I would just like to say that I had the chance to go to a Crestwood football game a couple weeks ago and got to see the band and the marching band, and they did a really, really nice job. So if anybody ever gets a chance to go out there and see that, I'm sure you'll enjoy it.
Go Chargers.
Yep. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. That concludes my report for tonight.
Okay. Onto the, thank you, Ms. Morgan, onto the personnel report. Ms. Lazar. Dr. Lazar, sorry.
No worries. All right. To start off this evening, we have four instructional appointments. The first is the appointment of an ELA teacher at Riverside Middle School, Mr. Stephen Phillips. Mr. Phillips earned his bachelor's in world literature at Western Michigan University. He also earned a master's in playwriting and drama turgi from the University of Glasgow and a master's in English from Eastern Michigan University. He has two years of instructional experience and comes to us from Quest Charter Academy. Our second appointment is for a math teacher at Crestwood High School, Mr. Anthony Semifaro. Mr. Semifaro earned his bachelor in mathematics from Eastern Michigan University. He earned his master's in the art of teaching from Mary Grove College. He is endorsed in mathematics as well as speech. He has 23 years of instructional experience. His ability to reach kids and develop meaningful educational relationships with students will make him a great asset to our district. He comes to us from Lincoln Park Schools. Third is the appointment of a math teacher also at Crestwood High School, Ms. Maha Atallah. Ms. Atallah earned her master in mathematics from the University of Detroit Mercy. She's endorsed in mathematics as well as Arabic. She has 15 years of instructional experience and is a great asset for our Crestwood team. She comes to us from GEE Prepatory in Hamtramck. And the fourth is the appointment of an ESL resource teacher for Crestwood High School, Ms. Lillian Kamaic. Ms. Kamaic earned her bachelor in journalism international studies from the University of Michigan Dearborn. She has completed the MARC program at the University of Michigan Ann Arbor to become a licensed teacher with an ESL endorsement. She has 22 years of instructional ESL teaching experience at all levels and comes to us from Dearborn Public Schools.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Sabah.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of the candidates named in action items A1, A2, A3, and A4 according to the CFT contract, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law.
Support.
Okay. Recommended action by Mr. Sabah, supported by Ms. Falaz, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of the candidates named in action items A1, A2, A3, and A4 according to the CFT contract, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law. Any discussion?
Just a comment. It's amazing how, looking at people's backgrounds as we bring them on, how interesting some of these people seem. It's like, you wish that we were here so you could talk to them a little bit more about their backgrounds. Like Glasgow University, like what kind of experience was that, you know? I just, I'm really impressed, Dr. Lazar, finding some great candidates. Thank you.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Nice job.
It's a, it's a team effort. I know our principals do an amazing job as well, leading some of these searches and those interviews as well.
Thank you.
And I don't know if any of the candidates were able to make it today, but if they have, can you please stand up and introduce yourself?
Hi there. I'm Anthony Semifaro. I'm from Crestwood High School Band.
You step to the podium, please.
Yeah.
He's using his teacher's voice.
It's like our Hard Knocks episode.
I never needed a microphone.
Well, we want the people at home to hear you.
I understand. I am Anthony Semifaro. I am the, one of the candidates for Crestwood High School for one of the math positions. I've been teaching for 23 years and coming here from Lincoln Park.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Thank you. Glad to be part of the team.
We're happy to have you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you again.
Any of the other candidates here who were listed in A1 through A4?
I don't see anybody else.
No? Okay. Hearing no further discussion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations to all our candidates.
Our second set of action items for tonight is non-instructional appointments. First is the appointment of a lunch monitor for Kinlock Elementary, Ms. Zainab Mansour. Ms. Mansour has volunteered a few times and has found a great interest in joining the food service department. She's excited to be joining Kinlock as a lunch monitor. The second is the appointment of a server cashier for Riverside Middle School, Ms. Hiba Awada. Ms. Awada worked for food service at River Oaks Elementary. She recently moved to the Crestwood School District and is looking forward to starting her employment at Riverside Middle School. And the third is the appointment of a server cashier also for Riverside Middle School, Ms. Hannah Hagege. Ms. Hagege's youngest started school this year. She is looking to occupy her time while her kids are in school. Ms. Hagege is excited to be able to join the Riverside team as a cashier.
Madam Chair. Mr. Baydun.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of the candidates named in action items B1, B2, B3, effectively pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law.
Support.
Recommended action by Mr. Baydun, supported by Ms. Kaminsky, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of the candidates named in action item B1, B2, and B3, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. The next is instructional appointment for Divine Child, the appointment of an AP art history teacher, Mr. Matthew Zemba. Crestwood School District and Divine Child Schools are in a cooperative agreement for Crestwood School District to provide this following additional non-core educational service. Divine Child is in need of an AP art history teacher, and their interview committee recommended Mr. Matthew Zemba for this position.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Sabah.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of the candidate named in action item C1, effectively pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law.
Support. Okay. Recommended action by Mr. Sabah, supported by Mr. Baydun, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of the candidate named in action item C1, effectively pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law. Any discussion? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations.
Our next action item is for the approval of non-instructional staff contracts.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Sabah.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the renewal of all non-instructional staff contracts for the new terms. See attachment D1.
Support.
Recommended action, supported by, made by Mr. Sabah, supported by Ms. Kaminsky, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the renewal of all non-instructional staff contracts for the new term. See attachment D1. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Our next action item, I know several of us have been anxiously waiting for. I know Mr. Abdul Haddi is going to be super excited. It's for the approval of an assistant principal for Crestwood High School, and it's, this is for the approval of a contract for Mr. Salah Abuzid. Mr. Abuzid holds a bachelor of education from Wayne State University and a master's in educational leadership from Eastern Michigan University. He has been in the field of education for eight years and has worked with students in classroom and athletic settings for 16 years. Mr. Abuzid is certified in pre-app curriculum and instruction and has completed certification in an aspiring administration program in addition to his master's degree in this area. He has completed reader's apprenticeship training, is a collaborative professional, and is highly involved in student life through his coaching experience of both boys and girls' athletic teams. Mr. Abuzid prides himself on his focus of teamwork and on striving to be a positive role model for students by demonstrating hard work and through the promotion of a positive school culture.
Madam Chair. Mr. Baydun.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Salah Abuzid as an assistant principal for the 2223 school year according to the administrative contract class step two, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law. See attachment D2. Support.
Okay. Recommended action by Mr. Baydun, supported by Mr. Sabah, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Salah Abuzid as an assistant principal for the 2022-2023 school year according to the administrative contract class one, step two, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law. See attachment D2. Any discussion? My discussion is that if it was appropriate, I would have also wanted to make this motion. But it is not appropriate, therefore I could not. But I was very happy to hear it. So, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. I believe Mr. Abuzid is here. Can you please come to the podium and introduce yourself?
Good evening, Board President. Elziah, honorable board members, Dr. Mousalem. I can't put into words how excited I am about this opportunity that's been given to me. You know, I really want to thank a lot of people to be able to be in this position today. Most importantly, my parents, who've instilled the values and work ethic that really allowed me to get to where I am today. My siblings, who have been supportive with everything that I've done. And then, most importantly, my wife, who's, who's never said no to anything that I wanted to do. She's always been, she's always been my support system. And she really, she's the one who really pushed me towards this, and I really want to thank her for that. You know, I also want to thank Mr. Abdul Haddi for also believing in me. I know he's got a great administrative team at Crestwood. There's a buzz going around with the school district. You feel it in every corner of this community. And I'm just excited to be a part of it. Really, I can't wait to put my head down and get to work. This is already a great place. A great culture has been established by Dr. Mousalem, Mr. Abdul Haddi, and the staff at Crestwood. My role is to just help cultivate it and try to take it to another level. So I really want to thank you all for this opportunity, and I'm so excited for it. Go Chargers.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
If I just may be a part of Madam President, Mr. Abuzid, I give you a lot of credit. You already have learned that all of your success goes towards your wife and your mom. Okay? And being the fact that I've been in administration for a very long time, my wife has been through that whole journey. You are right. As an administrator, your spouse is the most important piece because he or she is the one that are gonna have to deal with all of your BS all the time. So God bless your family, and we're happy to have you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. We're very, very happy and excited to have you.
And thanks for coming today.
Okay. Onto, I think the next item was E, right?
Yep. Approval of tuition preschool pay scale. In order to keep a balanced and proportionate compensation schedule across all employment groups in the district, the adjusted pay scale for the lead tuition-based preschool teachers is being proposed as follows. Step one at $15.75, step two at $16.25, step three at $16.75, and step four at $17.25.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Sabah.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the tuition preschool pay scale adjustment.
Support.
Recommended action by Mr. Sabah, supported by Ms. Kaminsky, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the tuition preschool pay scale adjustment. Any discussion? My discussion is long overdue. Glad to see this happening.
Wish we could do more.
I wish we could do more. I'll tell you, I know babysitters who won't accept this, but we'll save that for another meeting.
We hear you.
No further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Our next action items are for some leaves of absence. The first is a leave of absence for Ms. Alexandra Hosaki. Ms. Hosaki is a Riverside Middle School teacher and is requesting a leave of absence from October 22, 2022 through May 19, 2023 for care of family for her new baby.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Kaminsky.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the leave of absence request for Alexandria Hosaki from October 22, 2022 through May 19, 2023.
Support.
Okay. Recommended action by Ms. Kaminsky, supported by Mr. Sabah, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the leave of absence request for Alexandria Hosaki from October 22, 2022 through May 19, 2023. Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Throughout the leave of absence timeframe, are they still covered under our health care? Or is that COBRA? Or how does that work?
It becomes COBRA, right?
If it's unpaid, maybe it becomes COBRA. Yeah.
Okay. Any further questions or discussions?
Are these unpaid? I'm sorry.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Good. All right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The next one is a leave of absence for Ms. Rita Baydun. Ms. Baydun, a Riverside Middle School drama teacher, is requesting a leave of absence from August 25, 2022 through June 30, 2023 for personal reasons.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Sabah.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the leave of absence request for Rita Baydun from August 25, 2022 through June 30, 2022.
Support.
Okay. Recommended action by Mr. Sabah, supported by Ms. Falaz, that Ms. Baydun, a Riverside Middle School drama teacher, is requesting leave of absence from August 25, 2022 through June 30, 2023 for personal reasons. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed?
Abstained.
And we have one abstention. Mr. Baydun. Okay. Motion carries.
And the last is also a leave of absence for Ms. Fariah Albazee. Ms. Bazee, a Hillcrest Elementary paraprofessional, is requesting a leave of absence from August 25, 2022 through February 28 of 2023 for personal health reasons.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Sabah.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the leave of absence request for Fariah Albazee from August 25, 2022 through February 28 of 2023.
Support.
Recommended action by Mr. Sabah, supported by Ms. Kaminsky, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the leave of absence request for Fariah Albazee from August 25, 2022 through February 28, 2023. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
That's the end of our action items for tonight. In the informational items, we do have some resignations. It's up to you, Board President, if you want me to read through all of them?
No, I think we're, we don't normally do that, do we?
No.
I think we're good.
And a retirement. Ms. Monica McDonald Quick, the kitchen manager at Cherry Hill Baptist Church, has retired.
Congratulations. Congratulations to her. Okay, I believe the next item is the superintendent's report. Dr. Mousalem?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Board, community. Again, I would like to congratulate and welcome our new members to the Crestwood family, and those that are here and those that weren't able to attend this evening. We're excited to have you, and we're happy to have you, as I said, part of the Crestwood family. We're gonna continue to grow and continue to excel. We just got some updates, Madam President. So first and foremost, I wanted to announce that summer PEBT, if you all remember, families were receiving the PEBTs during COVID. So every student that was in our spring 2022 count will receive a payment of $391 on the PEBT card. So if they have that card, another $391 will be on there. If you are newly enrolled student, you will not receive this as part of Crestwood School District. Free breakfast and free lunch for our district is good through 6/30/2025. So there will still be free breakfast and free lunch. We've been approved through 6/30/2025, which I'm sure when we go through the process again, will continue to be approved. And then this is all through our CEP, which is our community eligibility provision. So basically what that means is that every student in the Crestwood School District gets free breakfast and free lunch.
Great. That's great. Yes.
To that point, I know you said we're gonna continue to apply. That's something that is personal, I mean, to all of us, we have to be ahead of the game, because I don't know how it works if they take so many districts early or whatnot. I don't know how the funding works, but definitely want to ensure that our district continues that through past 2025, right?
Definitely, yes. Sana Said and Penny Morgan work hand-in-hand on that to ensure that that gets submitted every time.
Thank you, Penny.
And trust me, every email I get, I forward it to them even if it's 15 times.
Awesome. Thank you.
How can we get additional money on this card?
It's.
Just from the state?
Yep. Leftover money from us that we're gonna.
I believe new cards were in the mail. You should have received them either Friday or today.
Also, I'd like to update everyone on the board as a reminder. September 29 at 6:00 PM, here at Riverside Middle School, we will, am I correct, Kristin? Riverside or Crestwood?
Riverside.
Riverside, I thought. September 29, 6:00 PM, here at Riverside Middle School, will be our kickoff event for the Education Foundation, where we're gonna be sharing information to establish the Crestwood Schools Education Foundation. So again, September 29, 6:00 PM, we will be sending letters out this week. So just so you're aware.
Did you email us something specific to the board?
Definitely will. Will do. Also, as an update on transportation and crossing guards, I wanted to update the board as well as the community that Andrew O'Hara has been working, her and Mr. Radwan Awada have been working diligently with Dean Transportation, who is the company that we outsource our transportation, to resolve these transportation issues that we have been having. And we are meeting with them with a plan very shortly to. And we are meeting with them with a plan, very shortly, to relieve some of the issues that Dean Transportation is having due to the lack of bus drivers. I'd like to emphasize, you know, they are short, what, Andrea? Eight bus drivers?
I don't know.
I just, the last time I spoke to him, I know it was between five and eight, from what they're used to having. So we are working on that, and we'll continue working on it. As for our crossing guard here for Riverside Middle School, we are, the city is looking for someone. So if someone has some extra time and like to get paid to be a crossing guard and help us, that would be great. If there are any parent volunteers, but we're also looking to try to service that area with some of our staff. So we are working on that, and I just wanted the community and the board to be aware. Additionally, as you see, we are all wearing our Blue Web t-shirts today. This is a massive new initiative here at Riverside Middle School. At the high school, our ninth grade team, we have what's called Link Crew, where it helps the students, you know, get into high school, and it supports them, and they have Link Crew mentors. We're doing the same thing here with WEB. It's eighth grade students who mentor, you know, sixth and seventh grade students. They help them with their lockers. They help them when they have concerns or different things. And hopefully, these WEB students will become our Link Crew students. So I wanted us all to wear our WEB shirts today, because I want to give the Riverside Middle School staff a lot of kudos for taking this initiative and going full force with it. So thank you for wearing blue today.
Yay, WEB!
Love it.
Also, I've been fielding emails and calls from staff and parents about Kinlock Elementary. So as everyone, those of you that were here during the study session, you saw, we talked about the expansion of our buildings, additional classrooms. Right now, Kinlock is bursting at the seams, more than the other two schools. So again, Andrew O'Hara, Rodro Nwada, Andrea Wood, and myself, as well as Dr. Lazar, we are looking at what the future is going to hold with our current student enrollment. It's also going to impact what next year looks like, as well as our transportation. And we have a couple things that we are going to discuss this week for some immediate release for our elementary teachers right now with the large classrooms that will lead into the future as well. So we hear everyone. I appreciate the staff members that have emailed me. Very professional, very solutions-based, and I appreciate that. And we've been in conversation, so we'll be bringing something to everyone very, very soon. I just want everyone to know that we are on top of it. Lot of things happening at the beginning of this year.
Chair. Ms. Fawaz.
Would we do any redistricting once we're done with the construction, so the families that live near their elementary can attend that elementary?
That's what we're doing right now. We're looking at the numbers. We're looking at households. We're looking at student population, where everybody lives. And that's all the data we're putting together right now, so that we can do that early, like January, February, so that everyone is aware. And then, we're going to have, our goal is to bring it to the board, discuss with the board our plan, and then, we're going to have town hall meetings at each elementary school to talk about that with the community. So it'll be very clear and concise, even way before the school year starts. So we're already on it.
Okay.
Some other notes of appreciation as well. Again, I want to send out a huge appreciation to our maintenance and custodial team. They have truly, truly stepped it up. I mean, just here at Riverside alone, Mr. Scott Caseball basically reorganized the entire building, so that there would be an eighth grade wing, a seventh grade wing, a sixth grade wing, so on and so forth. Also, to reorganize so that there's less traffic in the hallways. That took a lot of work from our maintenance and custodial team, because they had to help teachers move their classrooms. Plus, I know all of you were in the buildings in the beginning of the year. All of our buildings were clean. They were ready to go. I mean, and they were short-staffed. So I give our maintenance and custodial teams tremendous amount of kudos for being short-staffed, and I appreciate all that Penny Morgan, Ms. Morgan, has done to work with them to ensure they had everything that they need. So I wanted to send those kudos to that team.
Absolutely.
I also want to send kudos to our technology teams, with David Greames, Mrs. Katsitsinka, who are here right now. And Eric. They're a small team of three, and maybe at some point, we'll find some money to find them a fourth person. Penny's going to give me the hook in a minute. But I have to give them tons of kudos, because we have to remember, and I'm going to keep saying this, Mr. Green and his team passed out over 4,000 Chromebooks. They collect the Chromebooks. They exchange the Chromebooks. We are a, I want to emphasize to the community, we are a one-to-one district with Chromebooks, and we did it in six months. That's because of this team. You know, that was something that was in my five, yes. That was something that was in my five-year plan. We had to do it in six months, and we got it done. So I appreciate the team, and plus, dealing with all the help desk issues, so on and so forth. I want to also give a lot of kudos to our administrative team, not just cabinet, but our principals, our assistant principals. They have really worked the additional hours and time to ensure that our schools were ready to go. And then, finally, I, you know, I want to thank everyone else, our teachers, our secretaries, the cafeteria staff. I know I'm going on and on, our peers. I don't want to miss anybody. If you were at my opening speech, you would have heard it all. But after seeing how our school year started this year compared to last year, and then with COVID and everything, everyone in our district stepped up. There is not one person that didn't step up. Everyone did. And as you all know, my motto, my theme this year is be bigger than oneself. I'm already seeing it happen. People being bigger than who they are, looking beyond their own egos, looking at what can we do to help Crestwood. So I want to thank them all. I also want to thank Amity Foundation for their donation of backpacks. Mrs. Andrew O'Hara delivered those backpacks last week. We appreciate that. Those families and those kids that got those backpacks really had a big, bright smile on their face. So we thank the Amity Foundation. And then, I'm not going to name names, but I really, really, really want to thank everyone involved in that beginning-of-the-year kickoff event. That was fun, especially the fact that I got dunked like 13,000 times, you know? And the best was, you know, all the preschoolers and kindergartners that just ran up to the thing and just punched it, you know? Nobody threw it. But the highlight of the day was I got Mr. Abdul Hadi after he was talking, you know? Got him on the second throw. I literally walked, you know, when you see a pitcher throw that strikeout and then look at the batter when he walks away? I did that to him. But no, it was fun. It was a great event. I know we have a video online. I know a video was sent to you. We have that video on our social media. It was beautiful. So I want to thank everyone that was involved in that. I want to thank our board that attended and was there. And Mr. Sabal did a wonderful job railing as many people up as he could to throw, get me dunked in the dunk tank. Again, our elementary buildings, very successful. We're moving forward. Please, Kinlock, Hillcrest, and Highview, you see the work. We're getting, our bids are going out for our new turf and our new track. That's going to support everyone, everyone, in our district, in our community. And my last thing of commentary is, you know, I just, again, I want to thank everyone for their hard work. I want to thank the board for, you know, understanding and having faith in our team and what we're doing and the direction we're going. I look forward to this school year. I'm excited. So thank you, and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, we'll take public comment.
So I'm going to start by just reading our little disclaimer. This meeting of the board is held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for public participation during the meeting, as indicated in the agenda. This is not the time for debate or argument. In order to permit a fair allotment of time to participants, speakers will be limited to three minutes. The president may extend this time to five minutes per person when needed. Up to half an hour is provided for public input. And the first person I have is Mr. David Williamson. If you go to the podium.
Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. So for those who don't know, I am the president of the band boosters. So I work a lot with the director. So as you guys have already proved, this weekend, they're going on a trip to central Michigan. Normally, there is a bus driver from the district that will take them. Unfortunately, with the shortages this year, we were unable to get a bus. So me and the director worked to come up with a solution to try to get the kids there for the past few weeks, each time going back and forth with administration, with workarounds that was not working out. So it would be helpful if you guys can come up, or if somebody can come up with some kind of policy to distribute, so that we know exactly what rules we would need to follow, because currently, parents are going to be driving them, and so they can get there. So our first idea was to get a 15-passenger van that the director would drive up the students in. First, he was told that he would need a chauffeur's license, you know, we'll do that. So I don't know if that was, I know it's not a state law. I don't know if it is a state school law, or if it's a district law for the Crestwood district. But I think you might want to look and see if that really should be a requirement. To get a chauffeur's license, all you really need to do is to be a U.S. citizen, pass a 15-question test that comes from a two-page study sheet, and pay $50. So my understanding was a chauffeur's license, oh, you got to do all this testing and stuff like that. It's something. It's just really easy. It's kind of just a waste of time. So I don't know. If it is a policy, maybe something you want to look at. The last insurance is that the, sorry, the last hurdle was that insurance wouldn't cover a 15-passenger van, but it would cover a 12-passenger van. Unfortunately, at the time, there is no 12-passenger vans available for this weekend, though we did have a 15-passenger van already rented. So I don't know if it's, you can look at the insurance and, you know, to see the difference between a 12-passenger and a 15-passenger, to see if that's possible to up that. So currently, we are going to go, but we're going to end up renting two vans, two seven-passenger vans, and then, I'll drive one, and the director will drive the other one. I know this is a unique situation, because it is an overnight trip, but with the shortage of drivers, I see this happening a lot with other groups transporting students. So I would like to thank everyone who did make this trip happen. I know it was a lot of work and back and forth, and it's a new situation, and there'll be some growing pains. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And, you know, that's just an issue that's happening everywhere all the time, not only with band and field trips, but our own regular school routes. We're seeing some issues, and I know that districts across the nation are experiencing time delays with students getting on and off buses, picked up and dropped off, and I think there's a staffing issue nationwide. So Dr. Mousalem, you know, maybe you guys can just take a look at that.
Yeah. So with what we do with all the overnight trips, so usually, what happens with the process is overnight trips are supposed to be submitted 30 days in advance, so that we can go through this and ensure that we have everything in place, so that there's not any delay. We received this, I believe, Ms. Morgan...
Last week of August.
Yeah, the last week of August, and we've been trying to find ways to find transportation. I know Ms. Morgan and her team have been calling multiple bus companies, like even the travel ones, and no one has anything available. The other piece is, whenever we have any of these events, we go through our insurance carrier, and we ask them, what is acceptable? And we go off of that, because, God forbid, we want to make sure that we are compliant and we are in a safe situation. So we're, I know Ms. Morgan and her team have been working to try to find transportation, but there's just, even the large luxury bus companies don't have anything available on that day.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Do we have any more cards?
Yes. The next one is...
Ms. Sadeen?
Thank you.
Hi, how are you?
Good. Actually, I'm coming here to just talk about the robotics class. So...
I'm sorry. I didn't hear you.
I just, I want to talk about robotics class.
Robotics class? Sure.
So I signed for my kids for that one. It's like, for Bossy Mr. Ba, which is his was unlucky one to not select it for all year. So when I talked with the counselor, she told me, lucky kids, they get in that program. So that made me wondering, who's the lucky ones here? And how they scheduling these kids? Like, who decided? And even though, why this program does not get supports? So when you spend $2 million in athletics, why not supporting that one? And our district, honestly, is good-sized to be leading that one, too. And I don't know. I feel the kids, I like it. There's too many kids, they want to go in that program, which is, I feel, it's not fair. Some kids, they get it in fifth grade. Some of them, it's like in eighth grade. And when I talked with the principal, he told me, they make sure, it's like, the student they not going to leave Riverside, at least they will take once robotics class here. So how is that come if some student, they have really interested in robotics or coding? And when I see, it's like, there's a lot of money going on the athletics, so they just, it's like, supporting the sporty kids, and this one, how about the other kids they have? They don't like to play sports. So I don't know. When my, honestly, I was dealing with my kids all last week. He was sad. He doesn't want to even go to the school, because all his friend they were in, which is lucky student, saying what Ms. Perry, she told me, which is, I feel that response was unprofessional, honestly. How she decide there's lucky student and unlucky students? And I don't know, based on what, is that how they decide these kids, they going here because it's lucky one, and that one is not lucky one?
Dr. Mousalem?
So Dr. Lazar will look into that concern with the council, but what I can say about the course is, first off, the facilities support not just athletics. They support all of our programs. It just, a lot of times, athletics is highlighted. Robotics, we have invested in the last, since I've come in as superintendent, close to over a half a million dollars in robotics. We've even gave them their own individual space. We redesigned the entire classroom. So we are putting there. Now, in terms of courses, you know, that's something that the school principal oversees, him and his assistant principals and the counselors, because robotics isn't elective. And it's not about that we don't have more money to support it, but we only have one teacher who can teach it. And when you only have one teacher who can teach it, it limits how many kids can be in there. So the idea is, and you're talking about here at Riverside, I'm assuming, correct? So the idea is that it's an elective class, and as I believe you said, you spoke to Mr. Caseball, they try to get every kid in there at least once, so that they get that experience, so that when they go to high school, they can continue. So that with robotics, it's, because it's an elective class, there's limited space. So I'll have Dr. Lazar speak with the counselor about your statement of saying lucky students. I can't speak on that, but I can just speak on, you know, electives, number of courses available. And I will, you know, say, at Riverside, we are bursting at the seams. We don't even have enough classrooms to even do more of the things we want to do. We've had to realign different electives in order to be able to do what we need to do. And this is, this is a good problem to have, but we can look into it, and I'll have Dr. Lazar follow up with you to see, you know, what solutions there can be.
So I have another question. So when the robotic was in the Hillcrest, and other parents, even in the Highview School, nobody know about the robotic program there?
No, so robot, it wasn't a pro, it wasn't a program at the elementaries, it's, it's what's called a special. And certain cla, the, the teacher goes in and teaches, it's not a program, it's a special. They go in and they teach in the classroom. Dr. Lazar, do you wanna elaborate on that?
Yeah, so are you talking about the students who got it during the day or the ones that were in the club after school?
I didn't know.
During the day?
Yeah, no, 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 in Hill, in Hillcrest was like four years ago, because I know my kids are in the Highview, but I hear from my neighbor, it's like her daughter is like in robotics, when I asked her, she told me Hillcrest, I just offered it. So I was wondering, we are parents in the Highview School, we didn't know anything.
No, so it's a STEAM enrichment class is what that is, it's not robotics. So the same way that students have music, gym, art, we added STEAM as an enrichment class. So those students rotate and they work with specific grade levels, um, in order to provide a special during the day.
So that's not all the school, they have it?
All the schools do have it.
Not Highview, they didn't have it. All my kids, they went to the Highview School.
What grades?
They was like elementary school.
How long, how long ago, ma'am?
What that?
How long ago were they in the elementary?
My daughter now, she's in eighth grade, it's like...
So that was before we implemented these programs? This, this is something that our administration put together two years ago.
But my kids, they were last year, they didn't have, yeah, but they didn't have robotics. Even my kids, I have one now, first grade, they didn't, I didn't hear that one.
First grade doesn't have it.
Even the fourth grade last year, I didn't, I didn't hear anything. So I feel some school, they have different than other school.
Sorry, I don't wanna, uh, I don't wanna be disrespectful and call you Ms. Sveen, but I, I couldn't, uh, read how to say your last name.
Al-Makdad.
Okay, Ms. Al-Makdad. So what I'm hearing is you need some, you have some questions that you need some further answers to.
Yeah, yeah, because like, you know, because...
So what we're gonna do is, um, Dr. Mosalim has asked Dr. Lazar to get some answers for you and figure out what happened. And can we also, because I don't like the response that she got either?
Yeah.
You know, about, about...
Lucky kids, lucky ones, they get...
So if we could just maybe get to the bottom of what happened here with her student?
Yeah, absolutely.
And get some answers for her and see, um, if there's any type of waitlist or if there's a spot that opens up that maybe her son...
And another, uh, the last question I have, is that one is like random, big, the student, they're scheduling, or who decided? Just I'm wondering about...
That's what Dr. Lazar's gonna get for you, she's gonna figure out what happened.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate it.
Can you give your phone number with Ms. Fawaz for me, so that I can call you tomorrow?
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, thanks for bringing your concern.
Thank you.
Is that it? Christian, was there anybody else?
Madam President, and I do apologize, can I make one more announcement?
Yes, sure.
Uh, Mrs. O'Hara reminded me of something and I didn't have in my notes. Um, there is a, uh, was just confirmed, September twenty-seventh, and I will also send it to the board as well. September twenty-seventh at five-thirty here at Riverside, there will be a community meeting with Blue Hands United to discuss, uh, the autistics program, uh, ASD programming, and the Crestwood School District, so on and so forth. So September twenty-seventh, what?
Just to address some of our parent concerns that they've shared regarding our lack of ASD program.
So this is a parent meeting we're hosting?
Yes, parent meeting.
Yeah. So we're hosting a parent meeting on September twenty-seventh at five-thirty with Blue Hands United to give parents who were inquiring about our program with, um, special education students, uh, some more answers.
Yep.
So if you're interested, please attend.
It'll be here in the library, and, um, Blue Hands United is providing personnel to watch students, so that parents can talk to Dr. Mosalim and myself, and we can answer some questions that they may have.
Wonderful.
See, this is why you need to make those announcements.
And I, we started talking and I was a little scared.
Okay.
So I thought, that, that's all I have.
All right, great, thank you. So, uh, there's no more public comment?
Nope.
Okay, so we'll go to, um, board comments, and we're gonna start on this side of the room, with, uh, Ms. Fawaz.
Wow, I wasn't prepared to be first.
I have sat over there.
Oh, I need to suffer for your, uh, your math.
Fair, fair. Stop, Bo. Wasn't prepared to be first, but thank you. Um, I just wanna welcome all the parents and community, community members back to our, uh, school. Heard all great things from my kids, from other kids of how, um, how nice it has been, the, uh, school spirit, the vibe has just been great. Welcome our new, um, staff members, um, to our, to our district family. Um, and other than that, I'm, I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Baydun?
So, um, you know, there's, there's a lot of talk about, you, you know, I keep hearing from the community, we're spending so much money in athletics because of a field, and it is called an athletic field. But, um, to the concerned parent that was here earlier, I attended the robotics competition here last year, and there was probably four to five hundred people in our athletic gym where it takes place. Um, Mr. Williamson was up here earlier talking about the band and the arts, which takes place on the athletic field. So when we talk about facilities and fields, that doesn't mean football and soccer, it means gym class, it means the arts, it means football and soccer and whatnot, and it's for these kids. So I understand some people are not too excited about the district spending some money where it needs to go in the facilities, but I want everyone to understand that this is coming at zero-cost inflation to the district, to, to the, I'm sorry, to the households in the district. This is self-funded by the district. So I want everybody to understand that, and thank you to our administration that figured out how to do it and be successful. Um, but definitely, going back to the robotics thing, you know, that takes place in an athletic gym, right? Um, so I'm gonna stop and get off my soapbox there. Um, also, I wanna thank the community. Uh, we had an event here at Crestwood out on the athletic field this past Saturday where our Little League, uh, played, uh, they hosted three games, uh, the freshman, the JV, and the varsity. Congrats to all those kids, they actually won on every level. But, y- you know, seeing all the parents clean up, oh, there's some people there that didn't, didn't even have kids playing. They're running around cleaning up trash, making sure it was, you know, in great condition is when they got it. And, and, you know, to all the staff that was working, um, I just wanna say thank you. Um, couple other items here. Uh, JV soccer tomorrow, um, I believe varsity's on Friday as well. Uh, the time and place, I don't know if it changed, but it's gotta be updated on the website. Uh, JV football at Garden City on Thursday at six, varsity's home against Garden City on Friday. Um, and then there was one more item, uh, regarding bus drivers. I did see this morning, um, the six AM or seven AM news, they had a whole spiel on transportation and issues across the state. Um, I'm sure it's across the country, but this was particular to the state of Michigan. There's a lot of shortages. Um, I want everyone to understand, we have the buses, is that correct?
Through Dean, yes.
We, we, we do have securement of the buses, the problem is the shortage of drivers. And we do have postings open for drivers, correct? So if anyone knows anyone that can drive a school bus or is willing to learn, those postings are open, please make it out there. And, uh, other than that, uh, you know, it's getting darker earlier, uh, the weather's changing, so please, if you're at the bus stop early in the morning, whatnot, be cognizant of, you know, what to wear and/or, um, because of delays, possible delays, but what to wear, and then also something reflective if it's real early in the morning. That's it.
Thank you.
Well, I feel like I should just say ditto, because now I'm on this end and it's just not fair. But, uh, the event, the welcome event we had at Riverside and gave away, um, backpacks for the kids, it was amazing, and the turnout was phenomenal, it was so much fun. Um, so I wanted to thank everybody who had a hand in organizing that and staffed it, took a lot of people, and they did it very quickly. It wasn't something they thought of months in advance, it kinda just happened, so they did a great job. Um, Mrs. Berry's not here, she's recovering from a procedure, so we wish her well. And Mrs. Janoon's attending her son's soccer game at U of M, so, uh, we wish him well tonight, and I hope he gets some playing time. And other than that, congratulations to all of our new hires, those here and not here. We look forward to working with you, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Sable.
Well, now it's my turn. I do wanna wish the band great luck at the annual band day. I'm sure they'll do well, because they always sound great to me, so, good luck to you. And, um, I remember growing up, I heard people that were older than I that said, every generation has one day that they will always remember where they were. And I had teachers that would always tell me, I remember where I was when President Kennedy was shot. Well, I remember where I was September eleventh of two thousand and one. Every one of us does, when we heard that tragic news. And it's, um, I know it's September twelfth, but two thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven people lost their lives, over ten thousand first responders were involved. You know, we always say, we'll never forget. I just never wanna forget the twenty-nine hundred and seventy-seven people that died and the first responders that are the glue that holds all of our communities together, you know, the police officers, the firefighters, everyone that just keeps us safe. You know, our job is easy compared to theirs, and I hate to say that, because it's not, but that's how hard their job is. But I, I would ask that we, as a board, hold a moment of silence for all those that perished on September eleventh. Um, I can't believe it's been twenty-one years, but it has. So I, I, you know, hopefully we can hold a moment of silence here for the, all those that were lost.
Sure, we can, let's do that now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sable, for reminding us.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, so I'm last and least, I guess. Uh, you know, uh, just reiterate what everybody else said here today. I, I did notice something with the buses today, leaving work, um, I'm calling on community members, parents who are taking their kids to school, please, please be mindful of kids who are waiting to get on a bus. Those bus lights flash for a reason, when they're red, please don't try to cross the street. That, trust me, that thirty seconds that you're trying to beat, i- is not gonna save your life or get you anywhere so much quicker or get you on time. Please, please be mindful of the buses and the rules when, um, when you're driving your kids to school or when you're, when you're leaving your house. Uh, we had a, something in front of me today, I mean, two kids just trying to make the